All right, so it's five o'clock, five forty, five o'clock and forty six seconds. We'll get this meeting started and let's start around the table. We'll start on this end.
Alderman, Tim Kelly, Fifth Board.
Ben Jobin, Sixth Board.
Frank Holly, Sir, Vice Commissioner, and Commissioner Augustus will not be here tonight. He had a death in the family, so he'll be absent.
Latrice Lacy, sorry. Nicole Gleason.
Kyle Grip, Alderman at Large.
Marion McGinnis, Third Board.
Jasmine Newton, Elder Woman at Large.
And Tim Mike Gleason, interim City Administrator.
Thanks for meeting you.
And over here?
Yeah.
Oh, last one, I'm Seacoal. Allison Fleming, Chief Director.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we had three items, three updates tonight on business before the Council and Commission, and the first is update on discussion on the jobs posting. I believe that you have received an email about this, and Ms. Fleming, do you want to, do you want to, do you have any comments on this or anything you want to run over the highlights?
Sure, so I distributed a memo yesterday of President's reading with an update on job postings. I can give you another update on that because we worked with Director Lacy today, and those jobs, the three remaining jobs are actually posted, so they are out and live on the city's website.
And does anyone have any questions up from the Commission or anybody in front of the Council have any questions about the memo? So basically, we have, for the ones that are, were union, it looks like we're passing the hurdle, and it looks like it's at the state, there's a line of ratification or something in the state, but that is typically not an issue, is that correct?
So this is the first time we've done unit clarification like this. What we are doing right now, there is a proposed decision from the state that has to be posted and provided to potentially affected employees. That's been done yesterday, and that has to be posted throughout different city buildings through November 17th. After that, the board will make their final decision if no objections are received by the board.
All right. Anybody have any questions about this or comments?
Can you elaborate? What do you mean? You said posted throughout the buildings. What does that mean?
So we give notice, as I said, to the potentially affected employees, so that's directly emailed to them. There's three specific notices to be given to them. Those same three notices are posted in city buildings where there are other ABME bargaining unit employees. So for example, Public Works, Police Department, City Hall, and two other buildings, just to make sure their bargaining unit members are aware of the clarification.
So the jobs haven't gone public yet, is what?
No, the jobs are live while we're waiting on the final decision from the state. We post the jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about that? Okay, let's move on then to the update on office space, and I'll ask Director Gleason to, Nicole Gleason, to talk about that, please.
Sure, so city staff had Bray Architects do the due diligence exercise, and we received, there was a little bit of back and forth with Bray on some confusion on what exactly their estimates meant, so we went back for clarification and received that October 24th. I then presented a memo to City Council, which I just distributed. They presented costs for the ADA accessibility and the remodel for basically a ground level renovation, and then you can obviously read the full memo, was around 1.2 million. A full, full remodel, I think, including the upstairs, was 1.8. And then, obviously, again, the City Hall space, we still have estimated at 280, and then staff just said another option that Council could consider was if they, if none of those options were amenable, was potentially a lease, but we have not had a chance to meet with City Council on their preferred budget for this, so we thought we would at least give you the information, gain any feedback, and then we will defer to Council on next steps as far as the budget goes.
Question. What was that last option? I missed it?
We just said if none of the three options, one of the options Council could consider is a lease, not in a--
A lease?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
If you look on this, this gives you the four--
No, no, I just didn't, I didn't hear it. I'm old, I need to hear it.
Ah, I understand.
But she clarified it.
Okay, okay.
So I think, obviously, we still need Council direction on that, and, but just wanted to provide that memo so you would know the feedback that staff had given Council.
I guess my question is for Director Lacy and the Commissioner, I mean, what, what do you feel like you need space-wise? I mean, I don't, I don't know how, what you need to operate on Fire Station 3. Obviously, there's a lot of space there, but that's a pretty sized chunk of change.
I think just, just, have you seen these?
No.
So just seeing these, we would have to take these and evaluate these before answering that, before coming back with the reference.
And are there any other options? So these are, are all our options right now?
These are the options we have right now, but staff is happy to consider if other things are brought to our attention, certainly, and then if we do have any other ideas, happy to keep Council and the Commission up to speed.
I guess one other thing, this might be for CFO, so one of the things that's been asked, I think I've heard from Director Lacy and the Commission, you know, with all the back and forth and not being able to get people hired, you know, there's been money that has not been spent on salaries. What's that?
That's, that's item three.
That's item three on this agenda. Sorry.
Never mind, sorry.
Any, you know, on the office space?
So have we exhausted all of the city buildings that have, are not in use as well?
There was one, actually, Elder Woman McGinnis brought to my attention that hasn't been used in a while called the Collins House. I have not laid eyes on it. I have asked to get a tour of that. I'm getting a tour Friday.
What's the Collins House?
It's a facility next door to our Parks and Rec facility on 29th Street. It had been formerly leased to some sort of senior activity, but again, I've not, I don't know with the configuration, the number of offices, so I intend to go, to go visit and just see the condition of it and how many square feet it is and whatnot, and then if we think it could be a viable option--
29th Street by Duck Creek Park?
Yes.
Okay.
We would then, if it looks like viable, we would then invite for a tour, of course, but I haven't even seen it yet.
Okay.
Will we get a breakdown of what these numbers represent?
I can send you the detailed architecture report.
Sure.
Yep.
And you can share that with us as well, of course, right?
And it's on the bus line.
Collins is on the bus line, yeah.
Yes.
It's very close to Easton.
Yep.
So we'll check it out.
Right on.
Okay, any other questions about the office space? And I understand, this is, this is new information, and it's a lot of information, so I don't think there was any, any--
I guess my last question is, will we know, because we keep spacing out these meetings, is it going to be another couple of months before we know, or will we know this, like, maybe in a couple of weeks, so we'll know that this is something, if possible, we will move forward with, as opposed to waiting three to six months on an update?
So I think after we see the facility, if we think it's viable, we would invite for a tour to see if, with Director Lacy agrees or not, and then, of course, at the end of the day, we're going to need to defer to Council on what the actual budget is.
For sure?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I think Council wants to know from the Commission, out of, right now, there's four options, whether all of them are viable from the Commission's perspective or not. Once the Council knows from that, then the Council can decide which direction it's going to take. Obviously, I think this will be a consideration at budget time in light of the numbers.
I think the Commission would prefer to not respond to that at this point.
Oh, no, no, I agree, I agree. I'm just making it clear in light of the question Alderman Kelly posed, in terms of what's the next step. It appears that there's two steps. One, Gleason is going to go and look at this other building to see if it's even a viable option, and if, if so, invite the Director of the Civil Rights to see if she believes it's a viable option, so it would be added as maybe an option five. The Commission's going to look at the options provided and get back to the Council in terms of, yes, from the Commission's perspective, we think all are viable, we'll take any of them, or we prefer XYZ, but we'll do, you know, that sort of information, so the Council can then make its decision, because ultimately, if I am understanding correctly, the Council has to make a decision regarding the budget for option one, two, I think four would probably fall within the normal budget, right? So it's really one and two, if it's one of those options, there has to be a decision made at budget time, correct?
So the whole Council and the South Side Committee, is it already at 35th and Harrison?
I have not had anything to do with looking at any options. I'm just, I'm getting the same information you guys are on paper.
That's option one and two. That's a partial renovation and a full renovation for that location. For that, for that location, so that, that encounter entails options one and two. So what I'm understanding is, so, so then this needs to be clarified before we even look at it, because it appears there's budgetary limitations being applied to this at this point, based on what I'm hearing you say.
Based on what I'm saying, this would require Council action based on the number. I believe the Council's already, and please CFO, correct me if I'm wrong, the Council's already approved option number three, correct?
Option number three, I believe was approved for about $200,000 originally.
Okay, and it's my understanding we don't have a bid at this time?
No, frankly, we do not have a bid. I think it did go out to bid, and we did not receive any bids from contractors. I think there was a misconception on timing, so if option three is chosen, we would have to take it out to bid again.
Okay.
So they all have, the budgetary, they would all have to be gone back through for budgetary decisions, because nothing has been approved financially at this point, from what I can see, for the, any of these options.
Is that, I'll let the CFO answer that, since it's a budget question.
So if we do have the funding, which I believe we do have the funding for option three--
But you said you had gone for a rebid.
We would have to go out for a rebid, because we did not receive any bids from contractors in order to remodel the space, so yes, we would have to go and rebid that particular project.
So there's no financial decision that's been made on that, then if you got to go out for a rebid?
Mr. Ple, the approval for it was done by Council. It's in the budget, but when they sent it out for bid, they didn't get any contractors to bid on it. No contractor came back and bid on it.
Right.
So it will have to be rebid, but it was approved.
So when the contractor comes back and rebids on it, it's got to go back to Council for approval, the amount that the contractor comes back in for?
See, the contractor's going to go back out to bid, right? Anything over $50,000 would have to get a reapproval by, by Council, so--
It will require, or it won't require?
Yes, it will. It will require a resolution--
Okay, that's all I'm asking. It's going to require a reapproval by the Council.
Yeah.
All of these are going to require an approval by the Council.
Well, just for clarification, would four require Council approval based on the amount being under the 50,000?
If it's under the 50,000, it would not.
Okay, so only options one through three would require further Council action, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I think the Council would like to hear from the Commission when the Commission has had time to obviously discuss the options and get back to Council.
Okay, so, so let me just get clear here. Four is under the 50,000, so the 50,000 has already been approved.
Doesn't require a Council action?
Oh, doesn't require?
Anything under 50, the Council doesn't have to do an actual vote on?
Yeah, all right, all right, got you, thank you. All right, I got you, thank you. So let me be clear, I wasn't talking finances. I was just saying the communication level. So what I was asking is if Director Gleason's go see this property, how long will it take to get back to Commissioner Lacy, and how long will it take to get back to us before we would move forward with 29th Street? That's what I was saying, because it seems like we keep having meetings that three, six months late. That's all I'm saying. So I wasn't even speaking finances. I was just trying to say, if this is an actual option, how long until it comes back that this is a viable option, one, and since we're speaking on $50,000 and under, knock on wood, we're not going to find a good lease that's under 50,000, because what's going to happen is, you're going to find a place that's viable, then there's still going to have to be some things, there's going to have to be some sort of renovation, so we can hope and wish and pray for $50,000, but we're not going to get that. So I mean, it'd be nice to get a lease, but then there's still the accommodations of soundproofing, things of that nature, that we're, say again, yeah, you know what I mean, so, yeah, and so Rick has been on different locations, Alderman down, I'm sorry. So I'm just saying, I wanted to know, are we going to tighten up the communication? That's all. So we don't have to sit around and wait for another couple of months to make the next decision, and then the next decision being financial. So that's where I'm coming from, sorry.
So after, I should know by next week if we think it's viable, so I'll commit to emailing Director Lacy by the end of next week, whether it's viable or not, and if it is viable, establishing a time for her to see it.
That's all, okay, thank you.
Sure.
When does your Commission meet again?
Tuesday, second Tuesday of the month, that will be--
Okay.
The next week.
So hopefully, we can have that, that information to you before you guys meet, so you know if you have a fifth option, and then your Commission can discuss what, what your preferences are.
Awesome, that's, that's, that's great, wonderful, thank you. Sorry, I didn't clarify that.
I can understand what you're saying, so then if the Commission meets next week, when is, is the Commission going to provide information to the Council in terms of what the Commission would like to see in terms of viable options?
Yes, okay.
Understanding that you might know, not know much about this other thing that might be out there as, is listed here.
Based on us having all the pertinent information, and we may have follow-up questions, and when, once those questions are answered, then we would provide a final answer. But if there are questions, we would feed those back to, back to you.
Anything else on the update on office space? Okay, and so the final is an update on the request for a budget rollover, and I'll ask our Finance Director to comment on this, please.
Yes, so Director Lacy requested that some of the general fund money that was not spent in the general fund be rolled over from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26. The amount is just over $9,000. It has been the City's practice not to roll over salary savings from one year to the next. We see that as one-time money at that moment in time, and it just has been the practice of the City to not roll that funding over.
I think we requested for the Fair Housing and General Fund.
So when it comes to the Fair Housing monies, all of the unspent Fair Housing monies that we have received have been rolled over.
How much was that, if you don't mind asking?
I believe in salaries, I believe it's a line of administration was just over $30,000. They also do have, Fair Housing also has other types of monies that also has been rolled over as well. There's partnership money, there's other training money, and all of that that is unspent has been rolled over.
And so, I guess, one of my questions where I was going before was, and maybe this segues back to the two, so we're in FY '26, right, and obviously, they have not had the opportunity to fill those positions for which they've budgeted, so most likely not going to use 100% of budgeted dollars would be my guess, correct, Director Lacy?
We planned for this year because we were going to hire interns with the surplus.
Okay.
But we actually had $75,000 left over in the Fair Housing Fund for salaries and $9,000 in the general fund, so it's $84,000 total.
So I'd like to kind of explain the Fair Housing money. I think I've mentioned this before. When we budget Fair Housing, we budget an estimated amount. It's difficult to budget for that particular contract, because we don't get the information until the following fiscal year, so we budget, like currently, we budget for fiscal year '27. We're in the midst of budgeting, and we don't actually know what the dollar amount is going to be for fiscal year '27 until next year, sometimes in October or November. I'm not even sure if we received our contract yet for fiscal year '26. So when we budget that particular money for Fair Housing, it is an estimate that is budgeted, and once we receive the funding, we do have to spend it on that particular purpose, so if it is not spent for Fair Housing, we will roll over whatever is remaining of what is received. So we do not roll estimated budget.
This is not an estimated budget. This is, if we had the staff, we would have been able to use it, and this has been kind of a ongoing conversation with why that's confusing the way that it's structured by the City. It shows on the budget what Council approves that we're getting this full amount. It's offset by the amount that we get from our contract. That doesn't mean that we can't use the full amount, it's just offset by the amount that we receive in our contract, so if we had the positions and they were filled, we would have been allowed to use the 84,000, and that's the amount that Council approved.
Okay, I'm confused. It sounds like we're talking about two different budget lines. We're talking about a Fair Housing budget line that has within it salary figures and other things. Is that correct? So we have, we're talking about that, and then we're talking about, and that's a certain amount, and I don't, we don't have copies of the sheet, so I don't know what that is, and then we have 9,000 that's in our regular city salary line. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so is the question, is the question, and it sounds like anything that was in the Fair Housing amount was rolled over?
Anything that was received was rolled over, correct?
Received from the federal government?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And that funding isn't used for the salaries?
This is not agreed?
Excuse me?
Yes, are you here for planning and zoning or for the civil rights meeting?
I'm here to absorb knowledge and information regarding this.
Then this is a public meeting, yes.
Sir, you need to sit down. You, you, the public can certainly be here. We have people from the public. Sit down, but you can't comment, so, okay? Peace. Thank you, thank you, sorry. Okay, so, I'm sorry, it was a bit of a distract, a distraction. I'm, I, so, so there is not within the Fair Housing dollars salary funding, funding for salaries for Fair, just, again, I don't have the sheet in front of me, so I'm confused.
So Fair Housing has several--
May I see that? Thank you. It's red.
Yep, Fair Housing has several different lines when we get the agreement, one of which is administration, and those dollars are used to fund salaries when we receive it.
Okay, and that amount was rolled over, is that correct?
The amount that was received and not spent, yes.
Okay, so the, so something, the thing administration, you're saying is for salaries, but you're just agreeing it's not for salaries within the Fair Housing dollars, is that correct?
So the way that they have it structured, it looks like our Fair Housing Fund is budgeted at, I don't, I don't know the specific number down to the cent, but let's say $150,000. We never would receive that from HUD, so we may get 80 or 90,000 from HUD, and then we, the 70,000 is supplemented from the general fund. That's how it is every year, but there are positions that are assigned to that account, and so those salaries are paid out of the account regardless of what we get from HUD, and so we were not allowed to use it because we couldn't hire, so that's how much was budgeted through Council, and you all approved it, and then it was rolled into the general fund, I was told. So it was, when you go into munis, it says we had $75,383.24 left in the Fair Housing Fund, and $9,000, $9,019.40 left in the general fund.
I know that we don't generally roll over salaries from year to year in any department, but I'm still confused about where this, I guess I'm still confused. So my understanding is that we do not roll over, and we never have, if there's salary in the general fund, we have never rolled it over in any department. It, it is, it is a, for that particular line is a use it or lose it, is that correct?
That is my historical knowledge, that we do not roll over salaries. I'd like to clear up something to what Director Lacy is talking about. Historically, yes, we do budget an estimated amount for the HUD contract that we see for, for Fair Housing. If that particular fund is overspent, it would be subsidized by the general fund, or some of the expenditures would be moved to the general fund, because once again, it is an estimate that is, that is budgeted for that particular, particular revenue line. We never budget a transfer to the Fair Housing Fund or anything like that, so if we were to roll over the amount that was not spent but budgeted, it would definitely come from the general fund.
I want to clarify, it's not overspending if we are using the funding that Council has approved for it. So if Council approves us for five positions and we're paying salaries for five positions that Council has approved, that's not overspending the budget, that's using the budget that Council has allocated to the Commission.
But that budget is based on an, an estimated figure that comes from the federal government?
No, it's based on the amount, this, the salary line is based on the salaries for those positions, and so that's been an ongoing conversation for me to say, why do we have these positions in this account when it creates this confusion as to what amount is actually there, how it's supposed to be used, and it creates the impression that we are overspending as just described, and it's not if this is the amount that Council has allocated for salaries. So if you authorize us to have five positions, and we have five positions, that's not the Commission overspending, but it creates that impression on paper that we're overspending if you have to supplement it.
So question, so then I guess, are we, so we budget, and we're just kind of hoping that, or just saying thank you for whatever we do get from the federal government?
Basically so.
So then that offloads the general fund? Is that kind of the philosophy that I'm hearing?
Essentially, I do want to say that when we do our department meetings, all the department directors are part of the conversation and part of the, the budgeting process of any grant monies that is received, so everybody is involved in the conversation, so it's not just an estimate that the Finance Department comes up with. It is definitely something that we work with all the directors to come up with that dollar amount for the estimate. But essentially, yes, we budget, hoping that we will receive as much as we can, and if we don't, and we have to subsidize that particular fund, then we do it at that moment in time, and the funding for Fair Housing does fluctuate. Some years, we receive less, and some years, we receive double than from previous years, so it really is a shot in the dark of how much money we're going to receive from them.
And again, if we have 100 grand budgeted, position wasn't filled, wasn't used, we get nine, we get 10 grand from the federal, federal government, that 10 grand rolls over, and we essentially just have 90 grand that wasn't used. We, 90 grand we did need to subsidize from the general fund, is that--
That is correct. We didn't receive it, so we didn't roll it.
Yep.
So really, no, nothing was used. It wasn't overspent by, by the Commission?
Well, there was a transfer into it that was approved a couple of weeks ago, $30,000 or something, so with us having 70,000 remaining just in salaries, I'm not sure what the 30,000 transfer was for.
I can explain that. There was a transfer, it was actually reconciling transfer that we needed to make that cash equal of what was still owed to the Fair Housing Fund. I believe there's about $80,000 of unspent monies that is allocated to the Fair Housing Fund, and that transfer needed to happen in order to have enough cash to cover that liability of unspent monies.
A liability of unspent money?
That is correct. When you receive funding from the federal government or any agency, and we have not spent it on our balance sheet, it becomes a liability until it is spent.
And the 30,000 is transferred to?
So historically, my predecessor in the accounting department did not-- So historically, um, my predecessor in the accounting department did not, um, how do I want to say this? Did not do, um, unearned revenues. And, um, those are considered to be unearned revenues. So when I came into the position, I, um, kind of went with the GAAP accounting. So it's correct GAAP accounting.
So I have a question. My question, coming from nonprofit, you're saying use it or lose it. So you're not clarifying on the end for folks that don't understand this piece. So what monies you bid it for, what monies you got, what monies, were they returned? Because the way you're saying, I can't tell if they were returned or if you rolled them over into general funds. So explain all of that. You bid for what? What you got? And what you deal with the excess amount of money?
Is that a question?
It's whoever.
Um, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Okay, so you asked for two hundred thousand dollars, you got a hundred and fifty.
Yep.
Um, when I hear use it or lose it, coming from nonprofit, they will ask for the money back. So was any monies returned?
Returned to the...
Who, who, so if it was federal money, did you return the money to the fence?
No. It's still on the balance sheet.
Okay. So that's not use or lose it?
If, if I'm the one that used that term, if I could clarify what I meant. So, and I, and I don't have the answer to your question. But, so from, we have general fund, we have salaries in general fund. There are salaries in different, obviously in different pots of money. And if, there's, there's administration funding within this house, fair housing funding that has, is tied, also tied to salaries. But there's also a salary line and a general fund. And generally, they have, you have a salary line in, um, public works. I'm simplifying it. There's a salary line in legal, there's a salary line in every department. And if, at the end of the year, for whatever reason, uh, people have left, they've been hired, new people are hired at a lower rate, a thing wasn't filled. If you're, and at the end of the year, if your salary line was two hundred thousand dollars, right, in your, in your particular department, and there was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars actually spent, the department had, the, the department can't roll over the fifty, extra fifty thousand dollars to the following year. And so my understanding...
In general, yeah.
I got that.
Okay. So, okay, and that's what I was talking, so that's, that's what I was talking about. My, what I'm hearing is that there was nine thousand dollars in a, in, in general fund salaries. But there was also housing dollars, uh, uh, fair housing dollars that in the budget was an estimate. And then the figure actually came in, which I don't know if it was close or, and again, we don't know what's going to happen with that, right? I don't know if it was close or far from the budget. That has to, and we know how early we all have to budget. Um, and so, um, that has been rolled over, including the administration funds that has salaries in it. But there's another nine thousand that's in the general fund. Now, am I simplifying that too much or?
No, that's not what I'm asking.
No, that's two, there's two, there's two budget lines there. The general fund and the fair housing. And it appears that the fair housing was funded based on two, two elements. It appears that your subsidy and also the, the federal funding. Is that how that fair housing line is?
So typically, um, in the fair housing fund, we do not budget a subsidy.
Oh, I mean, but I thought I heard you say that you subsidize the, if, 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 if the, uh...
We have in the past, we have subsidized the fair housing fund, um, if it needed it, if it was overspent. Um, it's something that we have to do, um, so there is not a negative dollar in cash. But when there is not a needed subsidy, we don't do that because it's not a budgeted, um...
Okay. So let me just ask a question. So the fair housing was budgeted at, at ninety-five, nine-seventy?
Okay.
And, and so, um, twenty thousand five hundred ninety-four was used of that?
Yep.
Of that budgeted amount?
Yep.
And so that left a balance of seventy-five, three-eighty-three. And, and that's what we're talking about that should be rolled over because the, the, uh, positions were not able to be filled, so...
And I would one hundred percent agree with you that it should be rolled over if we actually received the estimated amount that was budgeted, ninety-five thousand dollars. However, that amount was not received, so that is why there is no money to roll over.
Oh, okay.
And see, that's the distinction. If the, if it's budgeted for staff salaries and we had special circumstances that were outside of our control while we couldn't hire. So that's the reason that we asked for it to be rolled over because this was not our fault that we couldn't fill these positions. And it put us at a disadvantage and behind on several things, so we need to catch up with those. This is how this account is budgeted. So if council approves us having, having five staff members, and the finance staff puts two staff members in fair housing and two in general fund, we don't have any control over that because that's how it's put into the budget. And we would never receive this amount of funding to cover the amount that comes out of that account. It has never covered it. In the, the eleven years that I've been here and in the years before that, it has never covered it. So there's always a supplement, but it's not documented on paper anywhere. And so my concern, and I have raised it over and over again every year, is that it looks on paper like we are overspending, but we're not because these are the positions that have been budgeted for by the city council. And so to phrase it as overspending is inaccurate because that is what is budgeted for. It, you budgeted for two positions to come out of there and two positions are coming out of there, that's not overspending. But it is gonna, the amount that we receive from HUD is never going to completely cover those expenditures.
And my question wasn't answered, just...
Your question was, do we have to return those funds, that funds?
So my question is, you, you budgeted for one thing, you asked. So you asked, what did you receive? We're not, you're not telling me what you received in order to roll over. We're somehow jumping into this thirty-seven thousand, we're negating the fact of, what did we get? What did we actually get? So I hear what Lacy is saying and I hear what Bush is saying, but nobody's answering the question, what actually was received from the funding? And now, because now we're playing this, well, we only rolled over thirty-seven thousand, what if we received sixty thousand dollars? Nobody's talking about that. How much money did we receive?
We haven't received the funding for this year.
No, how much money did the city...
That's what I'm saying, we haven't received it for this year yet because it crosses over two fiscal years. It crosses over...
Yeah, but we're, we're still, no, listen to what I'm saying. They asked for two hundred thousand dollars, what did they get?
So we don't actually ask for any funding, the finance department is not, I believe it's based on how many cases are closed within the civil rights department. Um, and Director Lacy, please correct me if I am wrong. Um, but, so it's not a request from, um, the finance department. Um, it's definitely something that the civil rights department works with HUD on receiving that funding. Um, and I can certainly tell you, um, via email, how much we received, um, last fiscal year, twenty-five, um, the fiscal year that we just disclosed. Something to also keep in mind is when we roll funding, there is actually, I have a rolling, um, spreadsheet of how much funding we roll. Because, um, we receive monies, for example, we receive partnership monies, and there is monies that is not spent. So we roll from year to year. So the money that I'm currently rolling, rolling could have been received two years ago, but it's still not spent. Um, so, um, we continue to roll that money as well.
Okay, my question still isn't answered.
We, we haven't received the funding that we would have received in October, November of this year because of the government shutdown.
Okay.
So, but when we receive funding from HUD, it, it, we're usually notified of it in October or November. And so it's crossing over two fiscal years. So it'll start in October of, you know, whatever year it is.
So what did the government email you and tell you that you were going to receive?
We haven't received yet because the government shut down.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you're have to, having to estimate your work and budget, so you're having to estimate your work
Sorry.
um, and budget, and, and, and budget for staff positions, um, ahead of what you know the funding will be, which is, is it, I mean, that's what, it, it sounds like...
We can't create new positions based on us thinking we're going to get more funding from HUD. So it's whatever the funding, whatever many positions council has approved us having. And then they just offset it with the money that we get from HUD, NEOC.
Okay.
It's just not documented on paper. So it creates some...
I got one other question. Um, how does GAAP impact this outcome? How, how, you said you, based on GAAP. You said you were using GAAP because your predecessor was doing something different. So now you're using GAAP. So how does that impact the decision that we're, we're looking at here?
So it doesn't have an impact on it. Um, we do just have on our balance sheet, on our financial statements, unearned revenue, which means revenue that we have received, um, that has not been spent.
I want to say one thing. Alderman Rip Hesley at Five Forty-Five, I was going to say that at the beginning, but that, that, we can keep, but he has to be gone today. If he leaves, that's why. Sorry. So, um, does anybody have any other, um...
I was at, um, a, a training session last week. And, um, with, uh, human relations, um, commissions, you know, all around. And, um, there's a lot of this that you've asked about, a lot talking about HUD. And, um, so, is it, um, is that what?
No.
I must, I'm somewhat lost in this conversation, I'm sorry.
No, I'm...
No, that's, 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 no, it's not. Um, so, so really, so what, what is the, what, what is the, uh, question that's on the table here? Uh, there's the money that's being rolled over, well, the, the balance, I should say, not being rolled over. And so, uh, Director Lacy is saying that it should be rolled over because we're rolling over the nine thousand, right?
No, no.
So we're not rolling it over either. So we're not rolling over any of the remaining balances, the...
That is sound, you got the finance department, no.
Okay. So the nine or the, or the seventy-five. Okay, so, so those remaining balances, so that's the question on the table is, is, uh, is how to address those, those funds.
Where I'm still confused is she's saying she's rolling over two years. So two years of this funding or funding, so I, every time you guys say something, it poses another question.
So HUD might give us partnership funds to like, let's say we pay for, um, a subscription to Westlaw. And then it's a three-year contract. So HUD would give us funding for it and then we can pay on it out of that funding. And that's how it's rolling over because it's being deducted monthly. But the funds have already been allocated to that based on the request that was made to HUD.
But is it rolling over as a benefit for civil rights? Or is it rolling, because the way she's explaining it, it doesn't...
It's money that you can't, they can't take that funding and roll it into the general fund because it was given for a specific purpose.
Okay.
And so we get like a certain amount for travel, we get a certain amount for whatever we have applied for, for if it's partnership funds or if it's what's called C-funds, special enforcement. Or if we have like, um, let's say we have a complicated public hearing and we need to hire an expert witness, we would have to ask them for that and then they give it to us and then we use it to pay for that. But then they also give us administrative costs, which is funding that we can use for whatever we want to use it for. They give us a certain amount of funding to like support our infrastructure, our computers and stuff like that.
So this is funding that you guys can access, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, the actual HUD funds, they, they, those aren't what was taken. This is the amount that was budgeted and it wasn't rolled over for salaries.
I know, but I'm just listening to all the language at the table from Alderman McGinnis to her of the use it or the, I don't want to throw that, I'm just making sure that I understand that.
Yeah, like if we had a position that was budgeted for at step five and then the person left and took us two months to hire somebody new and the new person started at step one, there would be a budget difference. And so we wouldn't expect to get that given back to us because that was a normal circumstance. But this, we were repeatedly asking for the actual fund amount so that we could post a position for hiring. And then that wasn't given, the position was taken down, uh, and nobody knows why. So that was several months of not being able to hire and then the union issue that has been going on since at least February of this year. So we weren't allowed to hire. And so then we just were placed at a disadvantage. Um, and so we were trying to roll that over so that we could use that to supplement what was lost last year.
My question is, huh, I mean, I understand being a kind of a deficit, uh, personnel-wise, right, not being able to hire. How, how would you kind of stay fiscally viable then going forward? So if money gets rolled over, I mean, you're going to have to hire somebody, but you're only hiring on a temporary basis, correct?
But just to catch up.
And I, and I, I get that, but I mean, I guess that's what you're asking, you're asking for, right?
Yeah.
And I...
And it's not an ongoing thing, it's just to catch up with what we've, we're placed behind from that.
Okay. I mean, yep, yep.
Okay. So is there another option then in terms of, uh, employment to address that, some of that workload that didn't get done in terms of what, in the next coming year? Can, can we bring, uh, part-time or, or interns or somebody to address that? Uh, that piece of work that would have been done here that you're, you want to address with this in the next fiscal year?
Yes, if we had funding, yeah. We could hire part-time people or interns to work on that, getting us back up to date on...
So, and it, and it could be done on a different line or, uh, it would have to be approved again? But say with this, you roll it over, you don't have to go back and have any approval over there?
I, I am lost again. I thought you said money had been rolled over. Bush, some of the money had been rolled over.
So some of the money that has been received that was not spent, they roll over.
Okay. And how much was that?
That's what I was trying to do.
So in salaries, it was about thirty-one thousand dollars, so that's the administrative costs.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So thirty-one thousand dollars was rolled over.
So then that would either we have an additional thirty-one thousand on top of what was budgeted? Or is that offsetting what was already budgeted?
Can you answer that, Bushell?
Um, I believe the budget amendment was done by my accounting manager and I would have to, just to make sure that it was done correctly. But it was added, um, to the salary line. However, we're still waiting to receive the contract for this year that we haven't received, um, in order to true up the account. This is the money that we're going to receive, um, for the contract, um, that typically we receive in October. We budgeted this last year. So it was twelve months ago that we had to come up with the number, um, and to budget that particular line. Um, so right now, that money, I believe, has been rolled over and then, um, we're waiting for the contract in order to true up those numbers.
So if it's been rolled over, is it available to the Civil Rights Commission? Is it available for use?
Yes.
Okay. So to, for salaries or whatever?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the salaries line.
And when did that, when did the roll over happen?
I think we processed the budget amendment maybe two weeks ago.
Okay.
But that's only the thirty-one thousand, is...
That is correct.
She's, she's only referring to the thirty-one thousand now, not the, not the eighty-four.
And, and where, where, what is the, relate the thirty-seven, thirty-one thousand to the eighty-four, what is the eighty-four thousand? This is where I'm completely...
Okay, so I'm going to just use round numbers.
Minus nine, seven...
So I believe...
I know, I know, I know.
For administration, I believe we received about fifty thousand dollars, of which we spent twenty thousand dollars and thirty thousand dollars was remaining. And that's the amount that was rolled over.
Okay. So you've never, there's never been seventy-five thousand? You're, they're talking a figure in the seven, around seventy...
That is correct because we estimate how much those salaries are going to be.
So it was estimated to be seventy thousand? Okay. Sorry.
So it was estimated, I believe, um, Director Lacy just said that her salary line was at ninety-five thousand dollars, so it was estimated ninety-five thousand dollars. We only received fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Of which we spent twenty thousand dollars. Which then the remaining amount is thirty thousand dollars and that's the amount that got rolled over, the amount that was not spent. And not the, um, not the budgeted number against what was actually spent.
Okay. So the budget estimated ninety-five, we actually only got fifty. Twenty thousand was spent and so thirty thousand was rolled over, so...
That is correct.
I think it may be confusing to say it's estimated. This is what's allocated. This is the budget.
But, but if the, if the, if it doesn't become a reality, and I understand...
Right, so that's what, without the reality, so this is what I'm getting from it. Once again, without the reality, the city would have offset the ninety. So therefore, the fifty was there, the city would have kicked in forty thousand dollars to make it make sense. But since it didn't come in, the city didn't have to make it make sense. So the money that was there, we've utilized this amount of money to do... So the money that was there, we've utilized this amount of money to do this. So now we rolled over the 27,000 because this is the amount of money that was left over from what we utilized.
But to say it's estimated.
There should be no more questions about that though.
To say it's estimated would indicate that if we don't get that amount, we're not gonna spend it. And that's not what the expectation is, and that's not how it is presented in the budget documentation.
I understand that.
So that's an amount, an amount budgeted, not an amount estimated. The amount that is going to be offset is the estimate. That's not the budget, though. And that's why we have been requesting for years to remove those salaries out of there because it creates this confusion of you're looking at it thinking that this is what's allocated and budgeted. And then it's not, and then at the end of the year, it's presented to council that we overspent. And so the council and the public think, oh, we gave them $150,000, and then they overspent by $40,000 or $50,000. So they spent 200,000.
So where I'm going with the reality of it is, until it's actually changed, that's why I broke it down for me. I gave the Sesame Street version. Until it's been changed, I understand what you're saying, but how do we make that change to accommodate you? But we're already here. So how, how, how's that change made? You know what I mean?
Well, so what's left over in, according to Muniz, was 75,000. So there is no, like, if, if our budgeted fair housing fund for salaries is 95,000, it's not now 100, 126. It still says 95. So it doesn't show that there's been 31,000 added to it. And I think what she's describing is they're offsetting this year's budget with the 35, 31,000 that rolled over versus adding 31,000 on top of what's been budgeted.
I think I have it, and then I fall back again. Sorry. I am, I am trying to understand this. So do, do, and, and I, I hear, I hear sensitivity about overspending. But, I mean, if you have, and, and, so I hope, I, I, you're in a, the Civil Rights Commission, by the way this is funded by the federal government, is put in a difficult position because you have to plan your work, but you don't know how much you will have. So, well, I, I think that's, well, it sounds, because it sounds like, and, and, and so I'm not, I'm saying that's a very difficult position to be in. If you don't know from one year, we don't know right now how much we're gonna get in this fiscal year. Is that correct, Basha?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And so the city is always in the position of subsidizing, or maybe not, maybe there's a great year when the, the, the goals that you set and set correctly as the, the administrator are met with the funding, and there isn't an offset, but there, so the, the question is, does the city assume there's gonna be some kind of offset? So I don't think it's overspending. You can't, it's, it's difficult to, to do work and not know how it's gonna be funded, you know, what amount is gonna be funded. Very difficult.
The council is approving for it to be funded.
I understand that, but I.
At this level, and we're not, the what, what the funding that we receive is doing is just offsetting what the city is expecting to spend. So you might not have to spend the whole 150,000 because we might get 120 between HUD and EEOC. And then you're only spending 30,000. But on paper, it looks like council is giving us 150,000.
But I don't, like what, I don't, I have a hard time understanding right now. And it sounds like the money that came from the federal government is being rolled over. But what is being requested is the offset that didn't happen last year be rolled over. And that, I think, is difficult for the city because it is, it is only offsetting what the overage was. It wouldn't be, it doesn't exist unless there is an overage. And again, I don't mean overspending on the part of the Civil Rights Commission.
The budget isn't changing. She's saying they, quote, they rolled over the amount that's going to offset what the same budget is. So if we were budgeted for 95,000 for two positions, then we're budgeted this year again 95,000 for two positions, and the 31,000 rolls over and offsets the 95,000. Plus whatever we would get this year, which would further offset the 95,000.
Which means from general fund, it would only be like 50, or whatever, 60, right, coming out for that.
But we do not, as a city, we do not, we have never, in terms of the salaries in the general fund, we've never rolled it over.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you there, but I guess the math, I think the math is actually fitting in my head.
It's starting to make more sense.
So then my question would be, so if, so say, and then I don't know whether it's for CFO or Director Lacy. So we take that out of the, the fair housing fund, or we disconnect the fair housing fund, right? We say, all right, it's 95 grand for this position. We're not even gonna worry about what we get from the federal government. You know, general fund is paying for that, okay? But then we get 30 grand. What do we do with it then?
We already, we already have 31.
Okay, but, 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 but say, so then, so then what do we do with that? What does that money get used for then?
That's fine to offset the salaries with it. I'm saying the way that it's structured, it looks like we are expected to maybe get 150,000, which we would never get. Just based on the size of our city. There's an expectation that we would typically get about eight fair housing complaints a year. We get exponentially more than that, but that's the expectation based on our, our, the size of our city. So that would never cover two positions coming out of that funding.
But I guess my question for you is, because it's, what I'm hearing is you're wanting, you're wanting the city, you want general fund to be 95, whatever else we get to come add on so that now I got an even greater number. Am I misunderstanding? Okay.
I'm saying it should all be on paper where you can look at it and understand what's happening, and that's not what's happening. So if we have 95,000 for these two salaries, if they were in the general fund,
Yep.
you would see that along with the other salaries that are in there. And then whatever we get from HUD, they could just offset it with, with the funding that we get from HUD that's, that is unrestricted. And then the rest of it is paid for through the general fund. But that's not what's happening. It's, these two positions are in a separate account. Council is approving it, I think under the impression that they're approving this to be paid from public, from council funds. And it's not, that's not how it's structured. And then at the end of the fiscal year, you're told, we need you to transfer money into the fair housing account because it's overspent. So there is no expectation that we're ever going to have this amount of money come in to cover this. So like, let's say if we don't get 95,000, we're not expected to fire that person. It's just, it's being supplemented by the general fund, but it's not documented on paper anywhere. And it is presented as overspending.
So, 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 I mean, so, so the red, the question on the table is, what are we gonna do with this?
Are they gonna roll over the funds or not, correct?
Yeah, 30, 30,000 of that was already rolled over, 31 out of the 84.
It's not in addition to what was budgeted. What she's saying is they're gonna roll over the 31 to offset the amount that's already budgeted.
Okay, so, so if they don't roll it over to do that, then what, what else are you gonna do with that, 30, 31?
If we had that added, we could hire more people.
Okay, so I guess that's the question for the council to, to increase the staffing level.
Well, yeah, and I can't.
No, that's, that's not on the agenda. That's a budgetary, and I don't think that's the question before the council. It appears that the director acknowledges that the way that finance works is that if it's not spent, it's lost for every single department. And she acknowledges that. Yeah, that's typically what happens. However, if I'm hearing her correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, she's saying we have unique circumstances here, right now, this one time. Because I wasn't able to spend the 95 and hire those positions. For whatever reason, we're not gonna go into that today. Today's not a trial, but nonetheless, those positions weren't filled, right? So what she's trying to say is, one time, I want that extra money to allow me to hire either an intern or whatever extra work that's not gonna be a full-time job, it's not gonna be a permanent job. It's going to be temporary in nature, made to help me catch up, to make up for the fact that those positions were not hired, and I, I am now behind on work. That simplify it? So if 95 was allocated pursuant to the budget that council approved, and out of that, we got 50 and 20 was spent. She's saying, as a one-time deal, we should look at it as if what the 95 would have been, what the difference is, and that's where she's asking council, which I think would require, if it's gonna be more than 50,000, a resolution as a one-time thing. She's not asking them to add any FTEs or anything like that, or change that. She's just, one time, set it aside, make this one exception on the basis of the commission is behind because the commissioner wasn't able to hire.
Right.
Is that essentially what, okay.
Yes.
That's what I'm understanding. So it sounds like.
Value is $31,000.
Huh?
And that dollar value is $31,000.
Well, no, the dollar value would be, out of this one, it would have been 95.
84,000, yes.
Was the budgeted amount, correct?
Yes.
And what was, what was actually spent?
$12,594 and 75,000.
So at least the 75,000, that's essentially the number that she's requesting, out of which 30-ish we have in our possession, correct? So it's a, you know, but the 30-ish technically rolls over and is used for the following fiscal year's money there, correct? And she's asking for it not to be counted as a rollover used in that account. She's saying the $75,000 difference on this, plus the 9,000 in general, that is what she is requesting. Which would require a resolution and a council vote because it's over 50,000. And it's a one-time thing that goes outside of what typically happens. In a nutshell, is that, is that your understanding too, CFO, of what is being requested from civil rights?
Yes, that is my understanding. I'm not sure if we need a resolution. We can technically do it with the budget amendment when we do that in April.
But I mean, it's over 50,000.
Yeah, and you would be approving that amendment at that time.
Oh, you're doing it with it at the time. Okay, that's what I meant. Sorry. It, action is what I meant.
Excellent, yep.
That's voted on. That's what it would require. Okay, there. Any questions?
Well, I have a concern about the precedent of the 9,000. Because again, we've never, you know, we have never allowed money in the general fund, money that comes out of the general fund to go and be rolled over. So what, we are setting a precedent here, and that's a concern because what happens when the next department says, well, you rolled it over here. So that's, anyway, that's just my concern about the 9,000.
So that would be a April discussion, I believe.
Could be. Could be, I don't know. But I bring it forward as, as something to, to leave on the table.
That would be a discussion in April when you try to make that amendment, I believe.
Yeah, she's saying they could allocate it now, and then council doesn't approve it until April.
Okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
But she's saying she doesn't wanna allocate that.
The 9,000, the 9,000, because of what it would, you know, create, potentially creating other departments. Right?
Just historically, we have not.
Okay. I mean, that's a pretty.
So you don't wanna set that precedent?
I don't wanna set that. I mean, I, that's me. It may not be anybody else's opinion. That particular part of the money, that is a hard, bright line that the city has not crossed. And have they ever crossed it since you've been here?
No.
I know Basha has said it is not. We don't have a lot of other, Ms. Fleming. Have we ever crossed that line when you, since you've been here? Of the, of money coming out of the general fund for salaries? Transferring them over, carrying it over to another year?
No, if it's a position, not that I'm aware of, but I'm not in finance.
Okay, okay.
The position is not filled and the money goes unspent.
But you're okay with the 75?
If, if, if they're, you know, at the, well, it sounds like some of that is already in. There's 30. So it sounds like less on whatever that number is.
40, so additional.
Right, yeah. I'm just, I'm concerned about that, that other precedent on the 9,000. So that's just me, though. I'm one person.
Require from?
Well, we can't take any action today. We can't.
Is, I understand what Alderman McGuinness is saying. I'm always about what is done, what should be done. I'm about the rules. I think if you guys don't know that by now, you clearly have missed several meetings. I also understand the concern Director Lacy has said and forth in the commission in terms of they're behind. They have workload that needs to be taken care of. We have positions up, but there's additional work that it would be helpful if they could get some extra help, like intern, part-time. So perhaps, I'm thinking outside the box, and again, we don't take any direct, or decisions at this point in time. But hypothetically speaking, if the council did a one-time allocation for just one year for intern or something like that at this, at this upcoming budget, would that be something that the commission could work with, Director Lacy, to account for that amount of hypothetically what would have been spent had you had those positions filled?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is exactly what I was going to suggest is
we maintain the integrity of the process, and we don't roll over. But if there are special circumstances, prepare a business case or a memo for council to consider that this is unique, and this is not an ongoing request. This is for a moment in time.
Based on the facts and circumstances that we have seen this year.
So you're asking the commission to prepare the business case?
Or the director.
Well, I mean, I wanted to say commission I'm speaking with.
I wasn't trying to put work on your plate.
All right.
I think that's the last one on the agenda, correct?
Yep, I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, and I guess there was a question someone had about when we.
When would that be due?
And when will we get a response?
And when would that be decided?
Whenever appropriate, whenever you wanna submit it, and it can become an action item for council to consider at any point.
But we have one cycle in December, two weeks, one, two-week cycle in December.
So.
So there, so after, I think it's about December 8th, because I think December 1st is on a Wednesday there. There's only, there's only one cycle. Let me give you that. Let's see. So that would be, yeah, I'm sorry, December 10th would be the last city council. The 3rd and the 10th would be the last cycle in December. All right, and you're having your meeting next week, so you might, you might have some input back about options. And additional option is being considered, so you'll be sharing that information. So I think there was some question about when the next meeting would be, and I don't know if we know that right now.
We, we could table, we could take care of that discussion on Tuesday at our regular meeting. So we should have something following that meeting. We can get that back to you.
Okay.
That way you can table that with your next session.
Mm-hmm, very good. All right. Does anybody have anything else? Thanks, everybody, for coming today.
Thank you.